Thank you. The time is 5:30. We have the presence of a quorum and this meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. We are here to receive the Texas Academic Performance Report. Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, Megan Evans, our Director of Accountability, is going to provide the annual public hearing on our Texas academic performance.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Dupree and Board of Trustees. Like you mentioned, I'm here to -- this is a required public hearing annually. The taper is released typically mid-November and the district has 90 days to respond via public hearing excluding winter break. So we are in compliance of that and that's why I'm here today. So, the taper in its entirety is several hundred pages long. And so with that being said and knowing that as much as I love data, that we probably don't want to be here all night long, we've highlighted some key pieces. But Board, please know that we'll be providing a digital copy for you in its entirety either at the end of this week or early next week. And so one of the pieces I do want to run through, particularly when you get this digital copy, so you know kind of the layout. These are all pieces that are required for the annual report. The first piece is our district accreditation status. So one of those pieces, and you've heard this information presented from the Financial Department, is our first rating. So our 2015 rating was passed. Our accountability rating for the district was a MET standard. We are an accredited school district. So those are pieces you're going to see as components of the taper. Also, we must include the actual taper. And I believe that y'all received that document or that report about a week and a half ago or two weeks ago for your reference. One of the new pieces this year, on the cover page, you'll notice that it indicates a special education status. This is related to our PBMAS status. And right now, we are in a stage two, which is Needs Assistance. And so we have special ed representatives here to respond to that. And one thing I didn't mention is we do have all of our program directors here. We're ready and prepared to be able to speak to not only more of what the data is telling, but what our response and the initiatives are to address those pieces. Because as we go through this, you'll see not every data point is perfect. And we've got some work to do and we recognize that. And we want to be very transparent about that. So we are Needs Assistance. We have a plan in place for that. I believe it's a very solid plan and so we're executing that. And like I mentioned, we have special ed administrators here that can speak to that. One of the other pieces that's required is the campus performance objectives. So our campuses at the admin team level set goals for improvement based on state assessment results. And so those are included in the taper as well. And then we report, and I'll share some of this data this evening, the count of violent and criminal incidents on campus and also some performance information in post-secondary I included this slide particularly to frame the work that we're going to -- the data that we're going to be talking about. One of the pieces that stood out to me, and I apologize, hindsight's 20/20. Next year, I want the labels to be a little closer to the colors. So I hope that the copy that you have in front of you, if either that or the screen, it will help you. But we're going to look left to right further on. But we are a majority-minority district. And you know, I've mentioned this to the Board before. I grew up here and so even seeing it this way was -- it framed things for me. I mean, we know we have IR campuses. We have challenges. We have gaps. We have deficits. We have a lot of great things going on as well. But looking at it that way, you know, we are a majority-minority district. And with that being said, we've got some pieces that we have to address. And on the right side of the slide, you'll see our program participation, particularly the fact that we have about 44% of our students are at risk and about 37% of our students are economically disadvantaged. All right. So let's talk a little bit about district performance. What I want to do is just provide a review of the STAR performance thresholds. And so there are several thresholds a student can cross when they take the STAR assessment. Their first one is the FASEN satisfactory. So that's what we call Level 2 Satisfactory. That's -- they pass the test. That's a very low, and I'll just be real frank, it's a low standard at this point. On average across the Board, it's about a 55%. So when I share with you what those FASEN satisfactory percentages are, I want you to keep in mind that that's out of 55%. I know as a classroom teacher and as an instructional coach, that wouldn't be where I was comfortable with the majority of my kids at, was a 55. We're doing great things in that area, but we have some other thresholds. We have some work to do. And FASEN satisfactory, that indicates that a student is sufficiently prepared for the next grade level or course. So Advanced Standard, that's that formerly known as commended. And that indicates that a student is well-prepared for the next grade level or course. And also, we have that post-secondary readiness. So right now, we're in the FASEN. This testing year of 2016, we are moving to a higher FASEN. It's not much higher, but it is higher. And it will now increase annually every year until 2022. So that's a challenge that we're very well aware of at the district level and as a campus level. What it's going to take for a kid to simply pass this year and subsequent years is going to be more challenging than it was in previous years. And so that post-secondary readiness, the state measures this on how many of our students are already there. Forget the FASENS. How many of our students are already performing at that recommended standard? And so that is our index for primarily. That's the composition for our elementary and middle school campuses. And so what they're looking at is how many of the students are in a final recommended standard. That standard that's going to kick in in 2022 on two or more STAR exams. So the darker color here, it goes left to right. This is State, Region, and Fort Bend. That left kind of group of bars is our all subjects. And you can see very clearly across the Board that we're outperforming the State and the Region, not only in the all subjects of the aggregate, but in every content area there, reading, mathematics, writing, science, and social studies. That's a great celebration. But what I'd like to show you is the next slide where we really look by student group. This is important. And again, this is where I apologize. If I had the time, I would have moved the legends. So you live and you learn. But this is a left to right. And so what you see here, State, Region, Fort Bend are the first three. And just kind of doing a quick glance here at this slide, there are student groups that we have that are outperforming the State and the Region. There are also some that are not. And we're very well aware of that. Now, Special Education, for example, that we can see is the lowest bar there at 38%. I will say that there were changes in the special ed assessments. STAR-M, rest in peace, went away. And so our students either took a STAR-A or a STAR for the first time. And so that did impact our STAR scores. Does that mean that we're in the clear with special ed? No, it doesn't. But that might -- that does tell a little bit of the story as to why we see that bar so low. So like I mentioned, there are definitely some deficits there, but there's also some huge cause for celebration. So this is that post-secondary standard I mentioned. So this is that final standard, what it's going to take for our students to pass in the year 2022. So we already have, we are outperforming the State and the Region for our students that are already there, that are already at that recommended final standard. You know, we have some gaps that are wider than others as far as how far apart we are from the State and the Region, but this, I was very excited to look at the data this way. This is pretty exciting. And what I didn't mention earlier, and I apologize, the labels are here, but all of these are including grades 3 through 8 and our end-of-course exams. All right. And so now here, I keep speaking to a little bit of the work that we need to do. This is by student group. This is that, you know, that final standard in 2022. If you look at the far right there, we have our Special Education, economically disadvantaged, our English language learners. We also have some areas, African-American, Hispanic, American Indian. We've got to address that and be culturally responsive in our curriculum and all of those pieces. So like I mentioned, we have program directors here today that can speak to that. But again, I want to caution, this is that piece when we talk with our campuses and we're working with our leaders, if we did nothing differently now, between now and 2022, this is what our data would look like. Because this is the final standard for STAR. There is work to be done. We've got some time, but we've got to do some work. So this is that Level 3 Advanced Standard, formerly known as commended. This is at our Advanced Standard. This indicates that they're well-prepared for the next grade level or course. So we are outperforming the State and Region. We've got some -- this to me is huge. I think that's very big. Now, one thing I will say that is an opportunity for growth is in reading and science. The gap there is not as large between the State and the Region as where we are in Fort And this is by student group. One of the pieces I know is your Board goals, all students, we want them to meet their full potential. And to me, this Advanced Standard really indicates where we've got some opportunity. Are all of our students meeting their full potential? Especially when we look at Level 3 Advanced, I don't feel we're there. I think we're doing some great things, curriculum and instruction. From the data standpoint, we're doing some great things. But like I keep reiterating, we've got some work to do here. Again, I'll point out, the State, Region, and Fort Bend, we're outperforming the State and Region. We've got some student groups that, as you can see, are over that line, well over. And then we have some that we've got some growth opportunities. This next slide, Slide 12, is the Met or Exceeded Progress. This was the most exciting data point, I believe, in the entire PowerPoint. This is the percentage of our students. The State measures from one year to the next STAR growth for those tests that are compatible for a growth measure. And we're looking at how many of our years, and formerly we refer to MET as making a year's progress, or exceeded is making more than a year's progress. So this met or exceeded has nothing to do with passing or failing. And that's a lot of the work we do out on campuses. You can have a student go from a 20 to a 40. They're still not passing, but there's some huge growth there. And that's the piece, I kind of feel like if we can have that growth mindset and move all of our students along the continuum, we'd be doing some great things. And we're getting there. So this shows the percentage of our students that are making a year's growth or more than a year's growth. And in the all subjects area, reading, math, and writing, those are the only assessments that have growth measures currently. Writing was, this was the first year that we had a writing from grade 4 to 7, which is pretty interesting. But we are outperforming the State and the Region in that as well. That's a big deal. That indicates, this has nothing to do with Level 3, passing, failing. We're growing our kids. And this is broken down now by student group. And so we've got some areas for opportunity, but I think overall, I'm not seeing too large of a gap here. I mean, we definitely have some work in our special ed population, but again, I'm going to go back to that assessment changing. So if a student went from a STAR-M to a STAR, there wasn't a growth component there. And so what you're seeing here is a student that took the same assessment from STAR to STAR. So we've got some opportunity for growth there, but I would like to think that that data point's going to be a little higher next year. All right. I want to highlight, this is our four-year, our class of 2014, four-year longitudinal rate. So as you can see across that first row, we are graduating more students in that four years than the State and the Region. We have less students receiving GEDs. We have less students continuing high school. We have less dropping out. We have more students in that four-year longitudinal rate that are graduating or getting a GED. And the same goes for our students that are continuing their education. So that's the four-year, that's the class of 2014, but the chart you see below that is the just 2013-14, grades 9 through 12. And you can see the annual dropout rate, just for all those high school grades for that one year, our percentage was 1.1%, where the State and the Region were both 2.2. All right. So I want to share the district profile here. Oops. All right. So this was quite an eye-opening, this first little set here of bar graphs, this first row, the total staff. The key thing I'm going to highlight here is that very last piece that says Central Administration. You see, compared to the State, we don't have region comparisons here. Compared to the State, the State has 1% of their staff is central admin. As you can see, Fort Bend's is .3. I think what that tells us is Fort Bend is not a top-heavy district. You know, we have more staff at the teacher level and, you know, closer to the kids. We're not a top-heavy district. And then in the teachers by years of experience, one thing I thought was interesting is you see, as far as the percent of teachers that are beginning-year teachers, we're pretty close there to the State. But we're higher than the State and our teachers that have six to 10 years' experience as well as 11 to 20 years' experience. So I thought that was a pretty good data piece there. All right. Violent and criminal incidents. What I want to review here is, you'll see the type of offense on that very first column, and then it's separated by elementary, middle, and high school, and then summarized at the end by all levels. This is the rate per 1,000 students enrolled, okay? So for every 1,000 students enrolled at elementary, we had 4.4 incidents of fighting, for example. One thing, I'm going to be real frank, and we have Dr. Don Carlson here and Chief Writer to speak to this if you have questions. But that fighting, that 25.4 stands out to me, at least. We know that that has decreased from prior years. And I believe y'all heard a few weeks ago from Jerry Cameraman, as well as Dr. Carlson and Dr. Villarreal, we're seeing some decreases even within this year as well. And just keep in mind, this is 2014-15 data. So just to summarize before there are questions, we know there's gaps. We know that we've got some deficits. But we've got a huge, considering all the challenges and, you know, we are a majority-minority district and we're doing some really great things. We are higher than the State and Region in our MET FASEN standard. So the students that are passing at that FASEN rate, we are higher than the State and Region for our students that are already at that final standard in 2022, as well as our students that are earning that Advanced Standard. We're growing our kids at a year or more than a year higher than the State and the Region. That's huge to me. That's probably my, one of my biggest causes of celebration on this PowerPoint. We're graduating our kids more. We have more college-ready graduates than the State and Region. Our average SAT and ACT scores are higher. And we have more students, graduates, that are enrolled in post-secondary institutions in the State and the Region. So that concludes the PowerPoint section. So time for public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. I'm sure we'll have some questions from the trustees and then we'll be receiving public comment as well. So, Mr. Rice.
Ms. Evans, can you elaborate, please? You keep referring to 2022. What does that mean?
So right now, we're in a FASEN standard for STAR. You know, with going from attacks to STAR transition, STAR is a much more rigorous assessment. With that being said, like most assessments that FASEN, we have lower standards that are passing at this point. So 2022 is when that final standard of what it's going to take to pass is going to kick in. So starting this year, every single year, it's going to be a little more challenging for a student to pass a STAR. What that means for us as a district, being more responsive, if we did nothing differently, all of those post-secondary slides that we see, that's what our basic passing rate would be. One of the things I talk about a lot when I'm out with campuses is right now, it's about on average a 55% to pass the STAR. You know, so when we're looking at percentage rates of 99% of, you know, this campus passing or 98%, that's huge, except it's at a 55%. So we always caution that, that that's going to go up. When we look on average in 2022, it's going to take about a 73% to a 75% to pass. So that's a mind shift. Right now, if I was in the classroom, a 55 would not be what I would be comfortable with. But also, a 75 might not be something I'm used to being a passing standard in my class for all of my students. So that's what I mean by that post-secondary standard. That's what it's going to, in 2022, be to pass.
Okay. So 2022, that will be the threshold. That's the year that it will be fixed, at least.
It'll be fixed, at least. And you know, I kind of make the joke that it could be the FLAR test at that point. We don't know. But the reality is that it is an index component right now. We are held to that standard. At least they're looking at, how many of your kids are already there? That's an accountability indicator. So we can't think it's so far out, we don't have to do anything, because it's still here now. We're held accountable to at the district level as well as the campus level.
So I'm looking at Slide 9 and I'm wondering, what are our plans for our special needs, our economically disadvantaged and English language learners?
Okay. What we wanted to do is make this presentation very interactive. And so what I'd like to do is defer to the program leads for that. And so if you want me to maybe take a collection of the questions and we can have them respond or have them come up, but we wanted to be able for them to speak to their initiatives.
So my question, which you can write down, is...
I think it's all right if they come up to the table. We can maybe roll some of these guys back and let the other guys...
All right. Get rid of this half.
Yes. Let's get all the program directors to the front of the room, please, so that you can move nimbly to the microphone.
So a related question that I would like to hear the response to is, on this same slide and on several of the other slides, and really on all the slides, our African-American populations and our Hispanic populations are performing below the State and Regional average. And that's very noticeable in every category, it appears. So I guess I would like to know what the district's response to that is as well. Do we have, are we ready to address Mr. Rice's questions?
Dr. Bush?
Okay. Okay. I'll start with special ed. Well, for one thing, last year, being the very first year that the STAR Modified Assessment went away, a lot of campuses, parents, and children were a little bit nervous to take the STAR-A, which is the new accommodated assessment. So one of the things that we've seen when we looked at some of our data is that we had a lot of students take the STAR, just a regular STAR. And these are students who have been on a modified curriculum, who have taken a modified test for many years. So one of the reasons I think that we saw some of our scores being so low is the State assessment that they took maybe was not appropriate. Of course, we want that modified assessment back, but it's not coming back. So we are hoping for this year, as more of our students have access to the STAR-A tutorials through TEA, they've just released them this week and said they're out. Students can learn and practice on that type of software program that they'll be tested on. That was not released until right before the test last year because it was a new test. That's one reason. But the other thing is that we've learned, when we look at our population of students in Fort Bend, and I'll be sharing a great deal with the Board next week when I talk a little bit more about an update for special ed. But when we look at our population of students, we're a little bit unique in that the over 50% of our population of students in special ed are students with higher needs, are students that are intellectually disabled, students with autism, and students with other health impairment. And when you compare us to other Region 4 and State school districts, that is not the case. They have a higher population of students with learning disabilities and speech impairments, which are disability criteria that are a little bit more milder, that would typically perform well on the STAR assessment. So we are looking at reasons for that and trying to determine, are there things that we need to be doing differently here in Fort Bend to identify those more mild students? But that's another indicator that we believe is a reason that our students look like this in the scores. And then the third reason, and we've talked about, is just the move to a more or a less restrictive environment for students to be served in general ed as much as they can. And we've talked about moving to a more inclusive model such as co-teach, that that would allow our students to have more access to that rigorous instruction from teachers that are highly qualified and that are really more aware of the content. Because when they're in a special ed setting, their special ed teachers are highly qualified, but they're really working on more special ed modifications and they struggle to stay up with the same kind of content that they have to prepare them for the STAR test.
So let me just understand, you're saying that with the new STAR test, there's not a modified test for special needs students?
There is not.
And there was in the past.
Yes.
So now everybody's taking the same test.
There's one alternative test that the feds say that about 1% of our kids can take. So that test has stayed. But the other kids, about 2% to 5% of students across the state of Texas were taking a modified test. And that is gone now.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? So that's a federal requirement, then, from...
Yes. Yes. And Texas has been fighting it for some time. In fact, many states don't, had not had a modified test for many years. And Texas was fighting it and even had to apply for all kinds of waivers and, you know, finally, it's no more.
So in the new law, is that still the same? Is the law still the same?
Yes. And then in the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Act, there is no, there will be no modified test. And with the reauthorization of IDEA, we expect the same.
Okay. And then another follow-up to the special ed, since we're on that. Children that are taking the test that are in special ed for one reason or another, do they have their various accommodations? Are they allowed those accommodations for the test-taking time?
Well, and what's interesting is the new test that came out this last year, the STAR accommodated, is kind of a neat test. It's online and there are, I guess, text-to-talk features, you know, where you can listen and there's all kinds, you can wave the mouse over some of the sentences and it kind of presents things in a different way, an easier way. It's the same content, it's just presented in a different way. So I do think that students will learn to respond to that online test with the accommodations. But if they didn't take that last year, they took the regular STAR with whatever accommodations were allowed on the STAR. And all of them aren't allowed. So it was very limited.
So they're being tested in a way that's different than the normal way that they're being taught in the classroom?
Exactly. And we provide as many accommodations as we are allowed on the test, but the state test has some parameters that they receive every day in instruction, but we're not allowed to give on the state assessment.
Okay. So you're saying something that's confusing me. You're saying that the state test is limiting the accommodations that children can receive.
Yes.
But then you were also saying earlier that we couldn't, there was no modified test or that, I'm sorry, but I lost my guess.
Well, and students, under special ed, students, under special ed laws, students are required to receive modified instruction, accommodated instruction. So if a student needs modified instruction, if they have an intellectual disability, we provide that during instruction. But that doesn't mean the test will allow us to do the same thing. So the test may be at a higher standard and we can't change that factor. For students who don't require such modified curriculum, may need to have a test read to them or extra time, those kind of accommodations are allowable under the state assessments. And they were given to them if there are committees said that they require those. Does that help?
A little bit. It'd probably take three or four times to get me to understand it fully, but thank you for that.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do we have any more questions, I guess, on special ed, then we can move on to another topic, I think is a good way to do it. Mrs. Ross?
So yeah, while we're on special ed, and these comments may actually help with some clarification on that as well, because the difference is between a modification and an accommodation. And so our students who are in special ed, who are getting modified work, which means you're changing the curriculum, is different than having a test read to you or something along those lines, which is an accommodation. So my daughter had to go through this this past year. And so my questions are around that a little bit and what should we be doing differently? Because STAR-M is not coming back. We're stuck with STAR-A, which is great for some students and not so great for a lot of other students. And my daughter did take the STAR-A this past year. So just to kind of bolster what you said about moving to inclusive education and to co-teach, she is fully included. And actually, she performed much better on the STAR-A than I thought she would. And I really believe that that is because she's had so much good inclusive education and inclusive support. Where I saw an area of need is in preparing them to take the STAR-A, because she wasn't taught in the same way that she was tested. And one of my questions last year was, how are we preparing her to take an online STAR-A assessment if it's completely different than the way she's being taught? So that's my first question, is how are we preparing our kids for that? Are we getting ready for that? And everybody knows I hate STAR and, you know, progress is what I care about. I want to know if our kids are progressing. So what are we going, or what should we be doing differently in special ed because we can't change the state assessment? How are we going to be able to measure that growth in our kids in special ed?
Well, and I think we've already started some of those things. I mean, one of the big rollouts that we started this year was differentiate instruction with our general ed teachers. That is certainly one big, big push to help our teachers learn how to differentiate the instruction for students who are, you know, at a level that need extension, that need to have their instruction scaffolded and then modified. So I think that's one thing that we are doing and Stephanie's department has been taking the lead on that and will certainly continue because that's something that needs ongoing training and support for our teachers. The other thing, and like you said, our kids have not had the opportunity to practice on those online type of assessments. And some of that is because a lot of districts were waiting to see what the state assessment looked like before we went out and started purchasing software programs and things to mirror that. So now that we have a good idea, there's a lot of tools that have been released that we are actually looking at, some we've just started piloting, we're just looking and trying to learn what is the best way to replicate that kind of instruction in the classroom. So if a student can do that on a computer, or some kind of device, and that'll prepare them, and it'll mirror what they might have to do on the STAR A, that's what we want. And then I think the other big piece is just the access, like you talked about. So it's, you mentioned your daughter, you felt like she did better because she had access to general ed, and she was in the general ed classroom more. And so as we move through the rest of this year and go through next year, that's one of the things that we'll be coming to the board with, is our plan to implement a more inclusive model, to include co-teach. And we believe that that'll impact our students to have greater success. So looking at instruction, looking at access, looking at different types of software and tools that will really help us, I think those are all things that'll move us forward.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right about that, so I look forward to it. My last question is around kind of that assessment piece of it that we're doing as a district, because I know we give district assessments, and I know a lot of kids in special ed are, like my daughter, we are out of those district assessments, because they're not modified and they can't be modified. So how can, or do we have a plan to come up with an assessment for our kids in special ed who are not taking those district assessments, who don't have an opportunity to maybe perform well because of the way STAR is structured now? Are we going to create our own assessment to measure growth and see how effective we're being in the classroom with these kids?
Well, it's a little, it's twofold there. You know, we've talked to campus principals and special ed leaders on the campus about, you know, go ahead and using those district assessments and allowing students to take them, because really, they're formative assessments. They're not being used to grade them. They're really being used to see how are they responding to the instruction? How is the curriculum that they have been exposed to over the last six to eight weeks, how are they responding? So we would encourage our ARD committees to consider that and consider making recommendations to allow students to take those. Particularly, students who will be tested on the STAR are STAR accommodated. Now, not for students who would be tested on the STAR alternative. So that's what, you know, that's what we'd like to do. I think there are other ways that we can measure growth that don't have to do with a formal assessment, that we need to identify and help our teachers, and whether it's subtypes of portfolios, where you can show how a student has progressed by work samples, and different things like that. But we really want them to take those district assessments. And, you know, of course, we want the ARD committee to decide, because some kids, they might get too anxious, and it might just be too much for them. But we would encourage them to take that.
Thank you.
Can we address Dr. Garcia?
Thank you. I'll address the, Stephanie and I will address the English language learners with you. And again, I want to repeat what Megan has said, and we acknowledge that we have quite a bit of work to do, and that our students need to improve, not just in the content, but also in the English language acquisition. So I'd like to say that the department where bilingual ESL lies is currently called a special programs department, but a lot of change has occurred this year. With the exit, the retirement of Mrs. Cobas, we decided to go ahead and accelerate some of the things that we were thinking about doing in the future to better that department. And so upon her retirement in September, we began to think in the direction that we really needed a director that didn't handle all the entitlement programs, state and federal, and as well as bilingual in ESL, but have a separate director to focus on our population, which has reached about 12,000 students. And it's becoming increasingly a more challenging population. Just last week, we enrolled a 17-year-old student from El Salvador. We do that every single day. Having at that age, it's sometimes very difficult to try to explain to parents that we can't really teach him, and he speaks no English, 12 years of an American education by the time he's 21. So when we look at those specific things, and what we're doing with some of these kids, really, these numbers don't show what great progress we're making in terms of adding value to their education and their ability to perhaps hopefully get a diploma and be gainfully employed. So going back to what we've done, we've redirected some of the staff. We are going to be, probably next week, we will start interviewing for what we're going to call the Director of Multi-Lingual Services, that will focus on that department. We redefined job responsibilities in that department as well, where before, at the beginning of the year, we started out with one coordinator that handled all bilingual in ESL. We chose to split it and have more attention to our bilingual, to our elementary, to have one person for elementary and one for secondary. And as a matter of fact, the elementary person is with us today. I don't think she's even been with us a month. But Youngmi, Sue, will you please stand? Youngmi is our new coordinator for ELL, Elementary ELL, and she is just, we're very lucky to have her. She's wonderful and has done this work in Houston ISD before coming to us. Thank you for coming, Youngmi. And we, our coordinator for secondary ELL is not here tonight, but she is focusing on, in that regard, with those schools. So that's a plus, redefining their role and what their focus is. In terms of our facilitators, we have an animal, a little something down there. A gecko is coming to visit our board meeting and make sure I say the truth here.
I think it's an insurance salesman.
Oh, okay. So anyway, we also began this year making a very determined decision that our facilitators, in studying what was happening with our bilingual ESL facilitators, we weren't getting as much bang for our buck in many ways. And that is that a lot of them that were serving the campuses were spending a lot of time on compliance. And compliance should be separate and apart. They need to spend more time with the kids, indirect instruction, helping the teachers, coaching the teachers, and they're paid out of Title III, which also stipulates that they should not work in compliance, other than the grant does for LPAC meaning. So what we decided to do, and we started working on this last June, was to move them to the newly-developed teacher professional development department with Stephanie. And Stephanie will be talking about what she's been doing with them, to move them, because we wanted them side to side, shoulder to shoulder, with our teacher, with our helping teachers, and for all of them to learn each other's skill set and what they do. And so we did that and moved them away from the compliance, and that is working quite well. For our ESL teachers, we also re-looked at the formula that we were using to allocate those ESL teachers to the campuses, so that we could, if a campus had 25, a minimum of 25 students that were scoring on the Tell Pass under the beginner or intermediate, they would get one teacher, and that teacher would actually work with those 25 students. If the kids are in the advanced and advanced high, then they can be taught by an ESL-certified teacher. And so last year, and Jill is not here, but I believe last year, we had over 300 teachers get their ESL certification. We provided the training, and we paid them for their certification, and we paid for the training, we paid for the test, and we paid for them to put their certification to get that posted. This year, we've already trained, right now, we're at 319, and we have waiting lists, and we're trying to open up more sections. We are not just training just our English teachers with ESL certification, but a lot of our special education teachers, and some of the science teachers who want to do that as well. It's a great opportunity for our teachers, and I'm really thankful that we have that kind of money to do that. I mean, I could just go on and on, everything we've had. We've also written an incredible, robust PBMAS plan, and it's very prescriptive. And we've shown it to the principals, and we also gave them a list of the 235 students that dinged us in the PBMAS, because they are kids who have been in this country five or more years and still cannot speak English. So we went through and we looked at every one of them, and why at some points they've regressed on their testing. They did well, and then the next year, they don't. So we're putting some systems in place for us to monitor them more closely. And I'm just going to say one more thing, I promise I won't go over the whole list, but we are really very, we're all very excited about what we're doing for these kids. We also have 54 students at Progressive High School who would have been juniors and seniors, I believe I mentioned to you this to you before, that are still struggling, and we felt that there would be dropouts if we didn't do something very significant with them. So they get picked up at their high school, they go over there, they have intensive English, they have teachers who really want to teach that kind of population. It's a much smaller setting, and we will be giving them a computerized Tell Pass for monitoring purposes, which is called TEL, pretty soon, to see how much progress they've made. So we want you to know that we're on top of it. I mean, it's going to be a lot of work, but like I said, we do get quite a few students who, some have never been in school when they come to this country, and others, they really want to just learn English, and it's difficult for us to tell them, well, this isn't an English-only institution. You have to learn algebra, and science, and chemistry, and, you know, everything else, not just English. And so, but we're working on that. And what I'd like Stephanie to say is what she's been doing with this incredible plan, where we combine the facilitators, and they report to her. They don't report to the bilingual ESL department anymore. Stephanie?
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Let's talk first about the facilitators. When they were initially moved into our department, we saw a need to provide some training, to invest in them, and instructional coaching. And so myself and one of my coordinators has took some time to really work them through the peer coaching cycle, so that when they go in to work with a teacher, it's not going in to say, this is what you should do, but to work alongside that teacher, to model the strategies that we're doing in training, and to support them in where they are along that continuum. The other thing that we've done with the facilitators is collaborating with Susan and Christie's team. We are offering joint training, where the facilitators come in as the expert in ELL strategies, and the curriculum coordinator or helping teacher comes in as the expert in the content. And we're doing that training together for our teachers after school. It's an in-time model, so that it's over a unit of instruction that's up and coming, so that they have strategies that they can go back and immediately input. And we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from teachers on that training model. The big training initiative as far as respect to ELL students is PSYOP, which is the Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. It represents the best practice in ELL instruction. We made a decision in June to roll this out to our 14 bilingual campuses. Coming in in teacher development, it was our goal not to just train teachers, but to follow up and monitor implementation and provide ongoing support. So we developed a model of monitoring PSYOP implementation. It is like a walkthrough, where we model what we see in an observation time. Teachers and principals receive feedback on implementation, and then we develop follow-up meetings and faculty meetings to support where they might be on each of the components for PSYOP. Working with the national coach for the Center for Applied Linguistics, he noted that our implementation rate of PSYOP is double the national standard at this time, and they're looking at that model to take that back to the center. So I think that's going very well. Recently, we met with all of our K-12 principals to share data, which Megan's department put together for us, to identify a Phase II approach for PSYOP. We have approximately 20 campuses that our data say are candidates for PSYOP. Now, we're working with those principals to make sure that we're not layering one more thing on teachers, to make sure that this indeed is the right move for them in the next step. They were very receptive to this data model, and have called us to say thank you for looking at data, to say this is where our next step is in that implementation. So I think that the PSYOP piece is going really well. With respect to differentiated instructions, our 14 bilingual campuses are getting PSYOP. Our other campuses are getting differentiated instruction training on the teacher days. We've worked with the Department of School Leadership and Curriculum and Instruction to develop learning walks with our principals. These learning walks rate differentiated instruction implementation along a continuum, so we know that someone doesn't go to a training and tomorrow implement at 100%. That's not natural. So we want to say, where are they on the continuum, and what is feedback that we can give, so that we move to the next step, so that we continue to move? This model works a lot like T-tests. So we're starting to really use that language in the district with respect to differentiated instruction. And that's kind of our monitoring piece to inform our training there. The other two things that I would speak to, and I'll be quick, is that we, as we're working with all of the departments for teacher development, we've noted that a lot of times, we train on curriculum, and we train on ELL strategies, or we train on SPED, or we train on curriculum, but there's not a crossover. So we've really seen that as our piece to bridge those two. So we have an ELL mini-conference that's scheduled for June 6th. We have a national speaker coming in from California Berkeley to kind of kick that off. And we're working with Curriculum and Instruction, and also Special Programs, to get courses that overlay those ideas in there. And then with all of our course developers, each time we meet around summer PD, we're looking at our PBMAS data with SPED and ELL to really collaborate and find opportunities to show teachers how those skills overlay, so it's not going here about curriculum and going here for ELL and SPED.
I'd like to jump in at this point, I think, because you asked some very specific questions, but you've also asked some very broad questions. And I think it's important that we address the big picture. Mrs. James, you asked specifically about our African-American and Hispanic students. And I think you need to know, each of these populations are things that we discuss on a daily basis. And some of the strategies and the programs we might implement for special education are going to help with those two groups. The bilingual ESL programming, ELL, that's going to help with those groups. But when you get to the students of poverty, our African-American students and our Hispanic students, you've got to look at it in a different way. Addressing the needs of those students is not a program. It is a culture that we have to create, that has not previously existed in Fort Bend ISD. Fort Bend ISD is perceived as an exemplary district, and we are. But when you get to the student-to-student performance, which you see is our amazing number of high-performing students, has for many years masked the underperformance of other students. And so a great deal of our time is invested, and the board is ahead of us on this, really, because when you adopted the core beliefs and commitments, you talked about curriculum, you talked about leadership, you talked about all of the things in your core beliefs and your commitments, and in your priorities that we must address. So we know, from all the research, all the study, everything you read and know about education, having a strong curriculum is essential. Our board has been leading the effort in that. We are dedicated to fulfilling that commitment for our students. We believe today, we have an adequate curriculum. But we know we need to make our curriculum exemplary. It needs to be built out, fully developed, for we're doing all this wonderful training and differentiated instruction. But our curriculum is not built out to support all of those strategies the teachers are learning. So we're doing some great strategy piece, too, because when you think about the written, taught, and tested, we've got an adequate written curriculum. We're building up teacher strategies, so we can deliver in a more effective way. And we're also working on that assessment program. So we'll have real-time, you know, formative assessment in the classrooms all year, so we can gauge our students all day, every day, and know how they're doing, without making them suffer through lengthy benchmarks and district assessments and practice tests. And so we've got a lot of good work going on with our strategies. But I think the most important thing we also need to talk about is in every single school, and you've heard us for the last year or so, really get into this, we've got to build relationships with our students and their parents. We have to build a culture and high expectations for learning for all students, and that's something that does not exist in every classroom in this district today. And unfortunately, Fort Bend has a number of schools that have been underperforming for a very long time. And the students in those schools inform the district numbers that you're seeing in a huge way. And so we're doing many, many things, including leadership development. Every month, we're working with our principals to talk to them and train them and teach them about culturally responsive education strategies. We're talking to them about how to be better coaches, how to lead, how to set high expectations, and lead in their day-to-day behaviors, the things they do, to help the teachers at their school be successful. Two, I guess, three weeks ago or so, you heard one of our principals talk about dramatic changes in discipline at that school she leads. That's the kind of leader we're trying to help all of our leaders be, because ultimately, the principal job is the most critical. And the principal must lead the culture. They must establish the expectations in that learning environment. Certainly, the board does that for the organization. As superintendent, I do that, our assistant supes, everyone in our leadership team does it, but it's up to the principal to lead it on a day-to-day basis. So it's the relationships, it's the high expectations, it's a mindset that all students can and will learn. And we're talking about it all day, every day. We've had a team working on a very innovative approach that we're planning to roll out with the board's support next year in a couple of schools. We're going to share the details in two weeks about that. But it's the kind of thing that kind of breaks the previous thinking on how we educate students. And that's what we're seeing. When you listen to these directors, that's what you're hearing. And that's what we're seeing when you listen to these directors, that's what you're hearing and that's what we hope you hear, is that it's not business as usual in Fort Bend. And that's not to say the district has been bad before. It's to say the district is changing even more dramatically than ever in the students that we're educating, the students that are coming to us, and we're dedicated to meeting their needs. And so don't hear me saying anything has been broken. This has taken us to the next level, is what it's doing. And I think something we're doing that's much different than we've done before is even this taper report or the IR information you've heard before. We're not just looking at this taper report, putting it on a shelf and away we go. Every campus has their own taper documents and we're expecting the principals to use that as formative, you know, information diagnostic to work with their campus, the teachers, the staff at their school to look deeply. You see, we've got it all right there in detail. And so as we talk about, here's some strategies and we look at the detail of how various student groups are performing, you should be able to align these strategies to see improvements in these students. And I think if you look at, you've addressed, you've been looking at slide number nine, which is very, to me, eight and nine are the two most critical slides in this pack because they show where we're going to be in 2022. And it concerns me greatly that even our highest performing groups are at the sixty-eight percent level, at the seventy-eight percent level. So I think it's easy to take pride and look at this ninety-nine percent, eighty-five, ninety percent, but if, as Megan said, you've got to get basically a fifty-five on the test to be considered passing, that's not okay. That we don't ever say that's good news to celebrate. We expect our students to be much higher performing and that's what we're striving toward. So you've asked some very good questions and some of them we can give very specific answers to. Others, it really is, it's creating the culture and expectations that, that we're always going to be striving, striving for.
Well, thank you very much for sharing that because I think that gets kind of the heart of it. We like hearing the specifics, but the reality is, is we want to understand that every student is being cared for, that every student matters and that every student, there's a plan for every student. So thank you for expressing that and thank you to all of you who are working on the details of all of those plans for your particular student populations, but as I'm hearing you, Dr. Dupree, it's for every student and, and the, and the high expectations we have. Because you're right, the board does want every student to be successful. We want every student to reach their full potential. So thank you for sharing that. Do we have some specific questions that we'd like to keep going with? Mr. Rice, did you feel your questions were answered or do you have follow-up?
Yes, but I, Dr. Dupree, so I'm understanding the district is changing. And so our, our plan, our strategic plan has got to change to meet the needs of the kids. I know it's changed a lot from when my wife and I moved here in nineteen eighty-one. So my understanding that you're going to be unveiling that strategic plan in the weeks to come as you continue to share with us the plans for moving the district forward and, and how we're going to address getting all of these student subpopulation groups up to par.
Yes, sir. That's right.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Tassan?
And will that include addressing this, this cultural issue? Because that's actually, I was very glad to hear you say that because that's actually one of the things I wrote down. I like a lot of the teacher-focused things that I heard, but it, when you said the high performers had masked the underperforming, I really think that gets to the heart of the issue. So are we also going to talk about how to address this cultural issue?
Yes, we are. It's a big part of where we're headed.
Okay.
Mr. George?
Yeah, I greatly appreciate the presentation and I'm very excited about the change you're talking about. And I'm sitting, I was sitting here and thinking, we have a ninety-three percent graduation rate as, this is two thousand and fourteen number, right? So I was thinking about seven percent out of maybe around five thousand people. That's a lot of people. Three hundred and fifty-plus students we missed somehow. And, and we kind of touched to that and I, it concerns me. And also, Dr. Dupree, you mentioned about the percentages, you know, of course we are doing better than maybe state or region, but how we are going to, I mean, you said you have plans in place. And I'm, I'm, I was thinking three hundred and fifty students maybe approximately didn't graduate. You know where they are going to end up and we all know it. And so we should definitely, and I'm glad to see that you have some, you know, we all are thinking about them and because I'm concerned about those students where, you know, because essentially they are going to be our responsibility as a society. And also, second thing it concerns me is the violent and criminal incidents in that slide number eighteen. Talk about fighting in the middle school level. And actually you mentioned it is, it's, it's a concern, but it is, in my opinion, it is, it's more than a concern because I don't know what we are doing about it and Ms. Tassan mentioned about culture. And I like to see what we are doing about that that number is, at a middle school level means it's going to be moving on to the high school level and, you know, like so further trouble. So how do we address those issues?
Actually, with all due respect, when, at the meeting when you were traveling last month, we did a full report on that. And we would be, so we'll provide you that video and the documents and if you'd like, we have it for you to sit down and visit because this data goes back a year and we're already, our trends this year are dramatically different. They were showing significant gains, especially in the, in that area.
Okay, okay.
May I add, about the three hundred and fifty students, some of those students come back to be fifth-year grads. Many of them do. And those are not counted in the initial, you know, by the time they're four, four-years. And some of them are fifth-year grads because of the point in time that they came either to this country when they enrolled, some just got behind their credits. And some choose to go get the GED, you know, and they have a job, they need to go on to work, their family situation's different, but it's, you know, for the most part, it's not that high, once you consider your fifth-year grads.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. George. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Dupree, I do appreciate your comments also because in the past, you say we, you know, we're actually looking to unmask things and in the past, a lot of those, those achievements actually were celebrated and unquestioned. And so I appreciate you acknowledging that issue because we, we do need to really look and see who's really doing what. So thank you for commenting on that.
If I could make one comment, Madam President? I think, and when we have these kinds of conversations, it's easy to focus on the deficits, but I don't ever like to end a conversation like this without acknowledging and making anyone listening very clear that we're not just about raising the students who are the struggling the most. We're about lifting all students to truly achieve their full potential. So if we have students who are already doing really well, we want to help those students do even better. I mean, we believe in the board's core belief that all students will achieve their full potential. And so this is not just about raising the underperforming or helping our struggling students be their best, it's about taking the high-performing students to the next level as well. You know, so we're, we're equally committed. We believe all means all and if all students are going to achieve their full potential, that we have to deliver on that for all students.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments from the trustees? So now I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the public who'd like to address the board on this topic regarding the Texas Academic Performance Report. Do we have anybody? If you'd like to address us, you can approach the microphone. You'll have three minutes. I don't see anybody getting up. So I guess we have no public comment. So that means that we are ready to adjourn this meeting. May I entertain a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, meeting's adjourned. So for those of you who are here for the next meeting, we'll be starting that in about five minutes. We're going to take a quick break and we'll come back in about five minutes.